You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you're landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierra &amp; Luckler, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stuck out. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Huckle and here's what's happening in LA this week. Mayor Karen Bass delivered her State of the City speech. In her annual address, Bass heralded the momentum on rebuilding in the Palisades, defined a program for change in the upcoming fiscal year, and called on all Angelinos to play their part in improving the city.
Today, we're at Los Angeles City Hall to hear our mayor Karen Bass talk about her 2026 budget, public safety efforts, the rebuilding of Pacific Palisades, and initiatives to take Los Angeles into the future.
Today, we mark a moment in our city's journey. We take stock of where we are, how far we've come, and we assess the challenges in front of us together. Everybody, please stand and join me in welcoming the 43rd mayor of our city, our mayor Karen Ruth Bass.
I'm here with fellow Angelinos to really hear her vision for the future of Los Angeles.
And it essentially helps to provide a very overarching view about what she feels is the state of our city.
The recovery in the Palisades is on track to be the fastest in California history. We have issued permits to rebuild twice as fast as after the Camp and Wusley fires. We restored water nearly a year and a half faster than after the Camp Fire. And we restored power in just two months. We know the faster we can rebuild, the faster we can heal. For those who have lost a home, each and every day is a day too long, right? Because home is at the heart of healing. And that has been the North Star of our recovery efforts, to get people home. Angelinos, we are turning the corner on crime in Los Angeles, and we will not go back. Last year homicides fell by 14%. The number of shooting victims fell 19%, and we've intensified safety efforts on Metro. We have cracked down on organized retail theft, and we are acting boldly around MacArthur Park. The homelessness crisis is a humanitarian crisis, and it affects everyone. Those without a home and those who worry about what they see outside of their home. Inside Safe represents a major change. Instead of waiting on expensive new housing to be built, we tapped LA's supply of underused motels to bring people inside immediately. Inside Safe has cleared thousands of tents outside of schools, storefronts, and homes citywide. And after years of increasing homelessness, we are finally reversing that trend, and homelessness is down. And that includes a 10% reduction in street homelessness and a 38% reduction in makeshift structures and tents. Now, all of this comes as nationwide homelessness went up by 18%, but not in Los Angeles. Thank you for the honor of being your mayor. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has surpassed ambitious goals to clear wildfire debris in the Palisades. Now 100 days on from the fires, Mayor Karen Bass, city leaders, and the city librarian thanked the Army from the site where the Palisades Branch Library once stood.
We're here at the Palisades Branch Library Site, which unfortunately was destroyed in the Palisades Fire. But at 100 days since the fire, we're thanking the Army Corps of Engineers for the incredible work they've done throughout this community, but especially here at the Palisades Site where they've done and completed debris cleanup. There was a 30-day window to complete it. They did it in six days.
In this first 100 days of this recovery effort, we've been able to clear about 4,400 properties. Out of that 4,400, about 2,300 are fully completed. And one of those is the library. So the next steps for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are to not slow down at all. We are focused on safely completing this mission. We have the highest number of crews out in the communities clearing debris that we've ever had since the start of this operation, and we're going to keep up that sense of urgency to get through all of the clearance so really the community can then focus on rebuilding.
This has been a journey with a lot of devastation and loss and grief. But every single time I am in the Pacific Palisades, I see the forward progress. Things are happening here at an incredible pace. I just got back from Lahaina last night. And while each community's journey is different and has its own unique challenges, seeing other places rebuilding and recovering gives us a peek around the corner for what's next for us, too. And I come away feeling hopeful about the future.
I think it's absolutely wonderful that everyone's showing up to try to rebuild, and it just is a reminder of how important the public library is to people and what the public library means to people. It's a true community center.
It feels great to know that the library is going to be rebuilt and that they're going to bring everything that we had before back to the place. And I'm hoping that they also look towards bringing some of the memories that we had from the past that will help us also remember and never forget that what we went through. There is an inertia right now that is insatiable for the community to come together, rebuild our public spaces, our private spaces, and reignite what was the Palisades.
At the Mobile Home Park in the Palisades, city, county, and state representatives marked 100 days since the devastating wildfires. Leaders pledged to rebuild the homes and bring back this resilient community.
I want to commend Senator Allen on the selection of the site. I think it's symbolic in many ways. And as I look at the burned scars from the Mobile Home Park, I also notice the wildflowers poking up. We've got yellow and orange and purple wildflowers coming back. And I would tell you that that is the resiliency of this community, of this neighborhood, of this city, of our county, and of our state.
100 days, in some ways, it feels like it's been so much longer, but it's such an emotional roller coaster. I feel very proud of what we have been able to do, but also the trauma that everyone is still going through, especially people who lost their homes.
We're marking the 100th day since the terrible wildfires that decimated this community and the beautiful community of Altadena. I wanted to bring folks here to the Palisades Bowl. It was a beautiful Mobile Home community of folks of modest means, one of the few pieces of affordable housing here on the coast in our area, and mark this anniversary.
As a resident, to be able to hear from our elected officials giving some insight in what does it look like to rebuild LA, but I'm one of those people. And so to realize that there are people that are really standing up for us, it means a lot.
It's rebuilding homes, it's reopening schools, and it's restoring a community. That isn't going to happen overnight. But I know that with our shared sense of urgency, effective coordination, and leadership at every level of government, we are going to make it happen.
The Connect LA Job Fair is a bridge between job seekers and new careers. The Harbor Occupational Center, which hosted the fair, demonstrated to council member Tim McCosker that bringing employers together creates more connections and career-building pathways.
We are at Harbor Occupational Center in San Pedro in the Harbor area, and we are at a career and resource fair with over 40 providers here today, and we're expecting over a couple hundred attendees, folks looking for opportunities to advance their career, maybe new careers, and folks looking for resources towards great career advancement.
I think they're essential because it gives an idea of what the local industry is requiring or the basic skills that they need in order to find gainful employment. The fact that they have it here, Occupational Center, has another dimension to it that also explores opportunities for retraining in other industry sectors.
We have security, we have construction, we have medical, we have home care. We have a variety of jobs here, and there shouldn't be no reason someone can't find a career opportunity. We're not just here to assist them in getting jobs, we're here to assist them in getting careers.
These events are important for job seekers in the community because it puts you face-to-face with the hiring manager, with an employer, with a company that you might be able to start your career path in. I walked into one of these 10 years ago, and that's what got me on the career path that I'm in today.
This is our way of bringing the employers to the community. Instead of them having to go to the employers, we bring the employers to them.
Information is power. Go to booth to booth to booth, talk to folks. You may become surprised when you talk to somebody about a career that you never thought of.
Los Angeles International and Van Nuys Airports have earned continued certification for reducing carbon emissions from the airports Council International Europe. The council recognized Los Angeles Road Airport's Lawa and its continued commitment to sustainability, and gave both airports a Level 4 Transformation Accreditation. The Airport Carbon Accreditation Program assesses carbon management practices by airports and recognizes them for their efforts to quantify and reduce carbon emissions from airport operations. A Level 4 recognizes an airport for demonstrating emissions reduction progress. According to Lawa, LAX now joins only three other commercial airports in the U.S. with a Level 4 accreditation. For more information, go to lawa.org/news-releases. A new career pathways project will see the LA Zoo partner with Outward Bound Adventures to restore six acres of coast live oak woodland located on the zoo's property. The five-year Woodland Restoration and Career Pathways Project will recruit field technicians and youth to be part of the Outward Bound Adventures workforce. The Habitat Restoration will involve invasive plant removal, native plant propagation, continued scientific data analysis, and will have a public education component. According to LA Zoo, this unique project highlights how collective action can impact environmental change, create connections to nature, and enrich our communities. For more info, visit lazo.com/press. The Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, has announced that Fire Service Day, a citywide open firehouse celebration, will take place this year on Saturday, May 10. According to the LAFD, this year's theme, "Stronger Together: A Tribute to Unity," underscores collective strength and highlights the community's resilience through collaboration. On Fire Service Day, visitors to city firehouses will meet the LAFD team, see tools and training, and get help to establish a personal plan for disaster preparedness. At four focal sites, the department will offer special displays and demonstrations and introduce four honorary fire chiefs. With some exceptions and extensions, all LAFD neighborhood fire stations are open for Fire Service Day 2025 on Saturday, May 10, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit lafd.org/news.
Creating safe spaces for children to thrive in is what the Healthy Room Project is all about. Under this initiative, officers from the 77th Street Division and local volunteers came together to transform a space for a family who had been living in an RV.
Today, we're at a home in South Los Angeles where the Los Angeles Police Department has partnered up with the Healthy Room Projects to create a new home for these children and surprise when they return home from school. My interactions with this family started months ago when my partner received a phone call for service about a family residing inside a dilapidated RV outside of one of our local parks. The RV had broken windows and tears and holes inside. With winter looming, we knew it wasn't a safe spot for the children to live. A couple door knocks and a business card later, the family received their permanent housing. We were invited in to see how the kids were doing and discovered that they were sleeping on the floor with some blankets. And we thought that assisting them with getting out of the RV and getting into some housing wasn't enough. And that's when we reached out to our partners at the Healthy Room Project.
In partnership with LAPD, with the 77th Division in Southeast, and CSP, we've all come together to essentially change the narrative between law enforcement and the communities that they serve. We do this through a one-day effort where through nominations from LAPD, we will come in, renovate the entire bedroom, we paint, we build beds, bedding, dressers, all sorts of wonderful essentials that these kids don't have.
So as far as the before for the home, the girls were sleeping on the floor. I mean, they had some bedding, but not sufficient for them to feel comfortable. So right now, we're putting together two bunk beds and a single bed for two of the little girls and then the niece as well. Our hope is that they love it and that they receive something that they'd never, you know, had before. So they're going to be thrilled about their new room and happy about the color, too, because they've been asking for a pink room for a while now.
Como vivíamos, esto ha sido un cambio drástico, ver la felicidad a ellas y saber que como madre no estoy haciendo tan mal las cosas, aunque a veces sienta que estoy fallando como madre o quizás no cubro todas las necesidades de ella. Pero al ver tanta emoción a ellas y ver tanta diferencia en mi vida, yo nunca en mi vida imaginé tener un apartamento con cosas tan bonitas. Nunca lo esperaba. Los oficiales que estuvieron presentes de una u otra forma han estado presentes en mi vida, preocupándose por mí, por mis alimentos, mi seguridad. Saber que en nuestro camino, en nuestras vidas encontramos personas que nos brindan su apoyo sin conocernos, sin saber nada de nosotros. Entonces, eternamente voy a estar agradecida toda mi vida con las personas que hoy en día está haciendo esto posible.
We wanted to, full circle, meet back with the children and the mom and remind them that we were the police officers that at first they didn't trust, that first they thought were there to do enforcement or to take their RV away. We want them to know that we care, and we let them know that by putting our words into action and being here today.
A new location for the Turtle Ship was also an opportunity to celebrate Korean heritage. The gift from the South Korean city of Busan was recently restored and relocated to a new home at LA's Convention Center, where more visitors can be accommodated.
We're at the Convention Center today to celebrate Korean heritage, an opportunity for us to unveil the Turtle Ship that was once formerly in City Hall. There's going to be some speakers talking about the important things that we've done here in the city of LA, but it's great to have the mayor here as council member in the city of LA. I'm proud not only to be a council member of the area that I grew up in, but also to be a representative of the Korean-American community.
As we celebrate today, I want to highlight the outstanding work of our Tourism and Cultural Affairs Department, what they have done in restoring, conserving, and relocating the Turtle Ship from City Hall to the Convention Center.
The Turtle Ship was a gift from the city of Busan, South Korea, to symbolize a partnership of heritage and mutual shared values. It is really exciting to have it here now in its new location at the Convention Center as an opportunity for the city and for all of our visitors here to be able to see and experience what this important artwork means.
The ship was built in 1500s, and this was the first ironclad ship that was developed by my top great-grandfather. And eventually, because of their ship, a submarine was built. So it has a very strong history behind that. Everybody would take a look at this ship, and they're going to say, wow, you know? There was no type of ship at that time. And this was really extraordinary, and glad that it's over here. And it is great, just great.
I think it's exciting, especially through celebrations like this where you understand history and you understand each other's backgrounds and you understand why you coexist. And I think that's what's important about knowing about each other.
In this week's feature story, Deputy Mayor Randall Winston talks to our Ann Police about the wide scope of his role. Winston deals with the city's public rights of way, public transit, and the supporting services that all fall under the banner of infrastructure.
Joining us today, we welcome Deputy Mayor of Infrastructure for the city of Los Angeles, Randall Winston. We're so glad to have you on with us, Randall.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Very, very glad to be here.
Yeah, glad you could join us. As deputy mayor, let's just dig right in.
Yep.
What departments are you responsible for?
Great question. So Deputy Mayor of Infrastructure in this administration, I oversee the Board of Public Works, which includes five bureaus, the Bureau of Sanitation, Bureau of Engineering, Bureau of Street Services, Bureau of Contract Administration, and the Bureau of Street Lighting, as well as our Department of Transportation, and then the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, and really supporting the mayor and her three appointees to that body.
Wow, that's a lot of departments and bureaus to be over.
It's a lot, it's a lot. So think transportation and everything in the public right of way.
Okay.
And a lot of the services and kind of everyday challenges that Angelinos experience, everything from trash collection to, you know, you've got a light that's out in your street that needs to be repaired or trees that need to be trimmed. It's sort of the things that people can touch and feel on a day-to-day basis.
Within all those departments, there is a through line, which is to keep the city of Los Angeles running.
Yes.
On the daily, what are some of the challenges that you meet being over all of the infrastructure of Los Angeles?
Very good question. And you know, when we started this administration, when I came into my role now just over two years ago, we knew we were facing some headwinds. Lot of incredible policies on the books impacting our right of way. Vision Zero, Mobility 2035, Complete Streets, measures really from the past 10 years to improve our streets and their safety and quality of life. Challenge, I think, was delivery a lot of those services. Projects not being delivered on time, not being delivered on budget, certainly downtown, but throughout the city. We are, or really have been, one of the only major cities in the nation that doesn't have a long-term capital infrastructure plan. So looking at how we budget for our capital improvements and our work in the public right of way, beyond just a single-year budget process to multiple years, five years, 10 years, 20 years, I think the mayor feels strongly that only through a long-term budgeting process will we be able to get through our backlogs in service, our backlogs for sidewalk repairs, for tree trimming, for repairing our streetlights, again, everything in our public right of way.
Let's talk a little bit about the fire recovery effort. Something like this, fire recovery, it takes a village. You're working with state, federal, as well as city groups. How is, how's that going?
You know, it takes a village, it takes a metropolis, right? To extend that metaphor even further. Very, I think, excited and, you know, I know the mayor and all partners are proud of the fact that we are undertaking the fastest recovery in modern California history, ahead of schedule on more or less, I think, every, every front. We're at today about 1,300 parcels are lost that have been cleared of debris, months ahead of schedule. The Army Corps of Engineers, I know just this week, ramped up from 89 crews to 95 crews, moving at a clip of 40 parcels per day, which is getting them on track to remove debris before the end of the summer. Again, record-breaking time. In tandem with that, we just said earlier this week, the mayor was out in the Palisades to celebrate breaking ground on a couple of properties that have already secured permits and are rebuilding their homes right now. Just yesterday, she was at the Rec Center, which we know is the cultural heart, you might say, of the Palisades community, standing hand in hand with Steadfast LA and the Lakers to put forth a vision for rebuilding and really reimagining the Rec Center. And so on really every front, the work is moving swiftly.
Well, Randall, thank you so much for joining us today. So glad to have you on. Do you have a couple websites you'd like to share with folks at home?
I do, I do, and thank you again. So first, the mayor's website, where you can learn more all about the mayor's activities, press releases, what we're up to across the city. That's mayor.lacity.gov. And then second, the recovery, and that is recovery.lacity.gov.
Very good. We have those up for folks to see and access. Again, thanks, Randall, for coming in. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
In this week's Things to Do, enjoy the Third Annual Women's Career and Wellness Expo, catch a community movie screening at the Campo de Coanga Museum, and celebrate famed Chicano photographer Luis C. Garza at the Central Library. All this up next on Things to Do.
Join the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power for its third annual Women's Career and Wellness Expo on Saturday, May 3. From helicopters to heavy equipment to pole climbing, visitors will get a hands-on look at the varied day-to-day work of LADWP staff. See dozens of career booths from different divisions and learn all about the jobs and benefits, including health plans, tuition reimbursement, and retirement plans. Enjoy exercise workouts, meal prep demos, and wellness info on-site. This family-friendly event is open to all and features kids' activities. Head to the LADWP Truesdale Training Center for the Women's Career and Wellness Expo on Saturday, May 3 from 10 a.m. For more information, visit ladwp.com/events. Enjoy a free community movie screening at the Campo de Coanga Museum on Saturday, May 3. Join the Department of Recreation and Parks for the historic film Salt of the Earth, first screened in 1954. Based on the true story, Salt of the Earth shows the everyday life and struggles of workers in a New Mexico zinc mine. The movie was cast with a mix of actors and real people from the era, and the story remains relevant today. Let the museum know you're coming on Eventbrite and enjoy this community screening along with free popcorn and beverages. Salt of the Earth Movie is on Saturday, May 3 at 12:30 p.m. For more information, visit culture.lacity.gov/events. Join the Los Angeles Public Library for an afternoon celebrating the work of Luis C. Garza, the acclaimed Chicano photographer. Enjoy the screening of a short film about Garza and his work. This will be followed by a discussion with Garza before he signs copies of his latest photography book. The library will also host a reception to officially open an exhibition of Garza's photography on view until July this year. Join LA's Public Library at the Central Library for the Other Side of Memory: Photographs by Luis C. Garza, on Saturday, May 3 at 2 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week. See you next time for more LA This Week.
All right, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 30th day of April in the year 2025. My name is Marquise Harris-Dawson. I serve as President of this council. Public comment will be taken in person in the John Ferraro City Council chambers for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, can we begin our proceedings by calling the roll?
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris-Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Hierado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of April 29, 2025.
Councilmember Soto Martinez moves. Councilmember Lee seconds. What's next?
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Rahman moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds. What's next?
Mr. President, shall I run through the agenda?
Yes, please, thank you.
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing. Items 2 through 28 are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item 16 has been submitted and available online under Council File 23-0550-S2. Items 29 through 49 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Members, are there any items which you'd like to call special? I'll start on my left side, to the east portion of the building. Any specials there? All right. Mr. Price, you sure we got no specials today? All right. On this side of the room, the west side, Councilmember Hernandez.
I'd like to call item 8 special for comments and an amendment. I'd also like to call 17, 20, and 40 special for a separate vote.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, could you please repeat?
Yes. Item 8 special for comments and an amendment, and items 17, 20, and 40 special for a separate vote.
17, 20, and 40 for a separate vote.
Yes. And the amendment for item 8 is gonna be circulating shortly.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I call item number 18 special for an amendment?
All right. Councilmember Padilla?
Yes, I'd like to call item 28 special for comments and a separate vote.
All right, Councilmember Yaroslavski?
Thank you. I'd like to call 30 special to hear in closed session, to be an F report.
Item number 30 for closed session, all right. Any other specials, members? Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to call item 37, to be continued, please, for Council District 14.
For how long?
5/7, May 7.
To May 7, one week. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any others? All right, seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, what items are available to vote on at this time?
You might do it now. And, good morning, everyone. So as we wait for the votes to be tallied, just a quick announcement to all the members of the public. I have been informed that Channel 35, the Channel 35 stream is currently down for issues related to the internet provider. If you are looking to continue watching this meeting or listening to this meeting, I recommend that you switch to YouTube. The feed should still be available on YouTube. Thank you.
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 2 through 7, 9 through 16, 19, and 21 through 27, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
13 ayes?
Actually, it's 13 with Mr. McCosker.
All right. What's next?
Next would be 17, 20 called special by Councilmember Hernandez for separate votes. Councilmember Hernandez, may 17 and 20 be voted together? 40 is not held yet, so that has to wait until after public comment, Councilmember. So at this time, Mr. President, council may now vote on items 17 and 20 called special separate vote by Councilmember Hernandez.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ayes, 2 noes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item 28 called special by Councilmember Padilla for a separate vote.
All right, any comments? No comments? Can we make sure Councilmember Padilla's mic is on?
Okay. Yes, Councilmembers, I will be voting no, because I truly think it's irresponsible for us to give up our power on things related to the private right-of-way, to the department, to the Commission of Public Works.
Got it, thank you. All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
All right, what's next?
Next, council has to wait for the amendment, so at this time, would council like to go into presentation, sir?
Sure. Today is denim day. I'm happy to see all of us in our fabulous denim this morning, and I want to turn the floor over to Councilmember Rodriguez to lead our presentation and recognition for today.
Good morning, colleagues. I am thrilled to be leading this, this presentation for our, for our council, and a tradition that we've honored here in, in city council for many, many years, but proud to be joined by what is now officially the majority female council of the City of Los Angeles. And we're here to, we're joined together in solidarity to stand up against victim blaming by ensuring that our voices are heard. I want to thank Wendy from Peace Over Violence, who's here joining us, and of course, everybody that is wearing their denim in solidarity with a response that is now being heard well around the world. It was based on a 1999 Italian Supreme Court case that was overturned, a conviction, because they said that the woman's jeans were too tight. And you know what? Victim blaming is a trend that has unfortunately plagued so many individuals, so many people for so many years, and it needs to stop with us. And wearing denim today is not just a performative need-to-do each and every day to ensure that victims are protected, that their services and the to ensure that victims are protected, that their services and the services that we all fight for, and I want to thank, I know so many of my colleagues have been involved in helping to ensure that victims' resources, as we continue to see this defunding from the federal level, from the DOJ, less and less resources that tend to the needs of victims, that have been victims of violence. We need to ensure that we continue to use our collective voices to protect these individuals, and I'm grateful to stand alongside colleagues that have been part of the resounding voices that have continued to show up in solidarity to ensure that we're here to say no more, that we will protect their rights, and we will fight to protect the investments in these critical services. As I've created, you know, so many of us have had initiatives that have helped to support the needs of victims. In my district, I have the first shelter that is wholly dedicated to women suffering, who have become homeless as a result of domestic violence. We know that the trend of what occurs and the vulnerabilities of victims continue to be under assault. Well, we need to make sure that we continue to come together in solidarity with one another and to protect all of those investments, and to ensure that we are not going to leave them out in the dark by themselves, that we continue to show up very strongly, very firmly, to change what has been sadly a normalized now in this environment, what seems to be very normalized coming from our federal government, is a continued assault on the most vulnerable. And we need to stand up and continue to fight against that. So I want to thank Peace Over Violence for being the everyday champion of this important work, because Patty Giggins, who we were out on the South Lawn with her just about an hour or so ago, has been, as I said, she's small in stature, but big in power and force. And she has been among those that has continued to uplift this message, to hold everybody accountable and hold everyone's feet to the fire. Because when everyone publicly likes to say that they are supporting of these things, we need to make sure that people actually show up in action and not just in performance and word. And so with that, I'd like to now invite someone who shows up in action every day on this work. They have been part of that resounding force that has ensured that this funding stays strong here in Los Angeles. I'd like you to please join me in welcoming Wendy Blanco.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm here representing Peace Over Violence. As you mentioned, Patty is small, yet mighty. And I think as a teenager, I remember seeing her in a rally like this, probably our first rally at, when it was called LA Live. And I remember her, you know, standing strong and really talking about elevating the platform so that we have sexual assault awareness. And so we started this month really strong with a launch of Denim Day, and we're ending really strong with this proclamation and this presentation to you all. So I want to express my gratitude to everyone that coordinated this and to who brought us here, because it is really important that we continue to elevate sexual assault awareness. And as you mentioned, this is a case that, you know, that happened almost 26 years ago, which was what sparked Patty's interest in starting this campaign. And as you said, jeans are a representation of, you know, us needing to continue to elevate and talking about these statistics. Because as we know, one in three women are survivors of sexual abuse, one in six men are survivors of sexual abuse. So if you think about looking around the room, how many people are here that have been survivors and have moved to thrivers? And so we want to acknowledge that this is still an epidemic. It still happens. And it doesn't happen usually from the stranger in the bushes. It happens from someone who is close to us, who has access to us, and who has oftentimes power over us. So it is really important that we continue to talk about this and not create stigma that makes it harder for us to report, that makes it hard for us to identify that we are survivors, and to stop making excuses for behavior, right? So we all have to be in this fight, along with not just the survivors, but also continuing to talk to young folks about healthy relationships and preventing violence. And so our organization does that each and every day. We provide wraparound services for our community so that we know that when someone is a survivor, we are there for everything that's post-survivorship, right? So that means housing, as you mentioned, that means financial assistance, that means employment help, that means counseling, you know, group counseling, everything that survivor needs to feel whole again, right? So we partner with a lot of agencies around the community, local rape crisis centers, which, as you all know, are also like up for funding cuts. And so this is something that it's really important in this moment for us to remember that, you know, our survivors are not forgotten. Sexual assault is not something that has been eliminated. We haven't solved the problem, and so the funds are still necessary, and these programs are still necessary. And so thank you so much for allowing me to talk about Denim Day, and hopefully, this will be a recurring thing.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Wendy. And so now, colleagues, I'd like to introduce my colleagues and allies up here in this fight. But I know we have allies everywhere, but I want to, we'll go in numerical order. And so numerical order by our council district, starting with Councilmember from the first district, Ms. Eunice Hernandez.
Hi, good morning, colleagues. Good morning, everyone. 26 years of Denim Day. It's phenomenal to see how many countries this has gone to. Right now, there's events happening in New York. And, you know, outside, I was saying something to the effect of like, no more, no more sexual violence, no more sexual assault. But what I really have to say is that it's time to stand up and fight back. It's time to stop saying, yeah, we wish people wouldn't assault people, sexually assault people, but we see it happening. And so what I'm trying to say is empower yourselves. I trained, me and myself, my team trained on how to protect ourselves with Peace Over Violence. They taught us the hammer move. They taught us how to get out of situations if someone's trying to harm us. That's what we need to do. That's what we need to exercise, because it's not enough to respond after harm and violence has happened. We have to do everything we can to prevent it, and oftentimes, that means defending ourselves and arming ourselves with the right tools and mechanisms to be able to do that. And oftentimes, that's our hands. And so I just, I wanted to say that, that that's what I feel like we need to empower folks to do today. And also, looking at my colleagues on the, on the horseshoe, where were y'all this morning to join us? We would love to see you all join us. We are majority city council of women, but we need our colleagues to be with us. It's not enough to say it here in chambers. We needed you outside. We're going to need you moving forward. This happens every year. Please, stand in solidarity with us, because then we can show other people, just like my pin says, sexual harassment, not in my government. Why? Because my government stands together. So I'm just calling y'all in. Thank you so much. 26 years, another 26, but we're going to keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Now, Ms. Yaroslavski. Oh, Nithya, I'm sorry, four.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, for leading this presentation. Thank you to all of my colleagues for standing as allies and in solidarity. And thank you, Peace Over Violence, for the work that you do year after year to make sure that this issue stays top of mind. You know, as somebody who, who worked on issues related to sexual assault and sexual harassment prior to my work here in city council, and as someone who is myself a survivor of sexual violence, I, you know, for me, this kind of moment is, it is, it's symbolic. We do it year after year. It can feel rote to some. But I know how important it was when so many people stood up, when the Me Too movement first happened, and talked about these issues openly, for me, pervasively for the first time in my life. And how many people in my community stepped up and said, I too have faced this. I too am a survivor. It helped all of us who experience harassment, and worse, forms of violence, to understand how pervasive this issue is. And that's why this is important to do year after year. We have to talk about it. We have to be able to bring attention to it. I welcome my colleagues to share your solidarity and your willingness to be open and to talk about this as well. But for me, this is not just a symbolic issue. It's an issue that can really beget change. And as someone too, who is from, who is Asian, in the Asian American community, we don't talk about it at all. And so for us, for many of us, for me, among my friend circles, in my Asian American community, in my Indian American community, that moment in, you know, when the Weinstein issues first came out, it led to very difficult conversations within my own community, and that's something that we've continued to have, and I think it is so important. So thank you all for doing this. Thank you for bringing your time and attention to this. It, it, it needs more than an annual reminder, but I'm grateful to be part of lifting up this issue every year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rahman. Now, Ms. Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Thank you to Peace Over Violence for continuing to show up year after year for survivors, because that's what today is about. It's about showing up for survivors, for communities that have gone without support for too long, and for the work we still have ahead of us. Survivors of sexual violence do everything we ask. They report, they speak up, they seek help, and far too often, that leads to more harm, not less harm. This reality is especially true for young women between the ages of 18 and 24. They experience the highest rates of sexual violence in our country. In LA, that includes students across our campuses, including at UCLA in my district, where hundreds of students file reports each year, but the numbers we see only reflect part of the story. Most survivors never file a report at all. Today is about remembering that behind every rape or sexual assault is a survivor trying to recover in a system that far too often falls short. Over the past year, we've made real progress here in these chambers. This council approved the largest increase in funding for survivor services in city history. We required training for homeless service providers to better support people who have experienced sexual or domestic violence. We created a task force to strengthen enforcement of DV restraining orders and remove firearms from dangerous people. These are important changes, but progress really does depend on follow-through. 15 years ago, LA was in the national spotlight for a massive rape kit backlog. There were many reasons for that failure. There was a lack of policy or procedure around submitting rape kits. Some officers failed to submit the kits at all. That was largely due to a cultural problem, and culture takes time to shift. But another cause was much simpler. The LAPD crime lab was understaffed and under-resourced. That is not a cultural issue. That is a decision, and it's one the city has the power to get right or to get wrong. If we want to prevent that kind of failure from happening again, we need to make sure the folks working in the systems we rely on are capable of doing their jobs. That includes having enough people to process evidence. It includes making sure survivors aren't left waiting, and it includes keeping in place the hard-won changes that advocates have pushed for year after year. So wearing denim today is one way to express our solidarity. Making sure this city delivers on its promises to survivors is another. That's the work, and it doesn't end today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yaroslavski. Ms. Padilla?
Good morning, councilmembers, and those who follow council through other communication measures. I want to start by thanking Councilwoman Rodriguez for leading this important presentation, and of course, to our partner, the one who makes sure that we never forget to have this conversation, the great organization of Peace Over Violence, for your powerful leadership year after year. I'm very proud to stand with my fellow women here on the city council to make sure that we talk about the great work of Peace Over Violence, and to remind folks of everything that has once upon a time happened related to dismissing gender-based violence, you know? And I don't think any of us come here with the intention of making anyone feel uncomfortable about having these conversations, but the truth of the matter is that we actually really do. It's about being able to be willing to have these uncomfortable conversations about the sort of things that women have to endure when they speak up for something that they have gone through. But what I think is very important, too, is that we recognize that this isn't just an uncomfortable conversation for women anymore. We have heard the statistics that this is, there is an increase. We have all seen the billboards of how there is now a movement to talk about the gender-based sexual violence happening to young boys. So we need to be willing, as leaders, to have these uncomfortable conversations if we're ever going to really put a stop to it. So I just want to emphasize that we shouldn't just do this work here today, but let's be responsible to take it outside of our chambers. Let's take it into our teams, our constituencies. Just recently, I had a situation where I was contacted by my foothill division about a young, a family who sent their young child, a boy, to go hang out with the coach to get things ready for a soccer competition. Ended up, he ended up sexually abusing him and then killing him and dropping off the body somewhere in Oxnard, right? Because culturally, we think that the, the boys are less susceptible. No, this is still very real. So thank you to everyone who is here. Thank you to everyone who wore either their jeans, their jean jackets, or their jean dresses, or blue just to show solidarity. Let's continue this work, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Now, from the 10th district, Ms. Hutt.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Thank you, council, for giving us the opportunity to really uplift what Denim Day is about. As a survivor, it wasn't until I started participating in Denim Day that I had an admission to myself about a childhood experience. So not to put anybody on the spot, but lift your hand in your heart if you've had an experience and it makes you a survivor. You don't have to do it publicly, but in your heart. And now I want you to say to yourself, it's not, it wasn't my fault. I didn't make that happen. I am a victim, but I am a survivor, and I am resilient. That's what I want you to say to yourself. Among women of color, the numbers are even more staggering than we hear, because they don't tell anybody. And I don't mean just a police report. I mean, they don't tell anybody. It's disproportionate in the black families, in Hispanic, Latino, indigenous, Asian, and trans families. The higher rates of assault are all too often, and their voices are silenced out of fear. As a mother, y'all know I'm a mom. I, I want you to know that these are not just statistics. These are our friends, our family, our neighbors, and our community. But, but we're not helpless. So I want to make sure that we're able to make change, and we need to teach our children about consent and respect early and often. We can believe our friends are survivors, but we can't do it if we don't teach them early about how this is not okay. We can support organizations by doing the work and provide trauma-informed care, legal advocacy, and safe spaces, but honestly, we have to reject victim blaming, and we have to remind those that experience abuse that they didn't do anything wrong. Thank you for Denim Day and always leading this charge. Thank you, Peace Over Violence, and Patty. We appreciate you, and we'll continue to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutt. Ms. Park?
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for your leadership, and to Peace Over Violence for the truly life-saving work that you do every single day, and to all of my colleagues standing here with me this morning for sharing your personal perspectives on this issue. I am really proud to stand here in this shared commitment to ending sexual violence in our city. Denim Day is more than a statement. It's a stand. It's a stand against victim blaming, against victim shaving, shaming, and it's a stand in support of our survivors. It's also a It's also a reminder that we have more work to do. And until every woman feels and is actually safe walking down the streets here in Los Angeles and everywhere else, the work isn't done. That's why I'm proud to join my colleagues in fighting on this council floor for the real resources that are necessary to prevent sexual violence and to support victims when it happens. And that includes fighting alongside and for groups like Peace Over Violence, whose leadership continues to educate and intervene when it matters most. And it also includes supporting the LAPD's operations, West Bureau Sexual Assault Section. I can attest to their dedicated work in capturing sexual predators responsible for the brutal attacks in my district, and it's a powerful reminder of why we need to support our public safety partners. I've spoken to this specialized team of officers and heard firsthand what they face, what survivors go through, and what it takes to deliver justice. And that only strengthens my commitment and resolve on this issue. Sexual violence ends with all of us working together, and I'll keep fighting until it's not just a message, but a reality. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Park. And our newest addition, Council District 14, Ms. Herrado.
Thanks, Councilmember Rodriguez, and thank you, Peace Over Violence. I'm Isabel Herrado, Councilmember to the 14th district. What originally started as a protest is now a day of solidarity, awareness, and advocacy. And I'm proud to stand here with all of you to emphasize a simple but important message. There is absolutely no excuse and no invitation for sexual assault ever. Many of the women that are standing up here, I appreciate your candor, and a lot of the women that are in this room know what it's like to be in an office and feel threatened or having to put your keys in between your knuckles as you walk to your car to make sure that you don't, nothing happens to you. But this is an issue that affects all of us, and we also know that regardless of gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, and racial identity, that this is an issue for you too, especially for our members of the trans community, who almost half of them have been sexually assaulted at some point in their life, and at least half of our LGBTQ young people have experienced forced sexual contact. And this is simply unacceptable, and we need to do better. And I'm glad that we have a day like this to really think about this and, you know, commemorate the survivors, of which I stand with some of them, and I see you, and I stand with you. So, thank you for this presentation, and thank you all for your advocacy.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Herrado. And colleagues, with that, I don't know, do we have any on the queue?
Thank you, Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and to, it's a beautiful sight to see majority women standing up there, and it's very well-deserved, and that's what I believe is the closest thing to, to justice. You know, I appreciate the call-out by my colleague Hernandez, and we deserve to be called out, absolutely. And I'll say, look, I, I started my career as a 23-year-old in a union that is a matriarchy. It was created by, it was formed by Madalena Durazo, the housekeepers who fight tenaciously to change lives. And much of my lived experience was uplifting and working with those, and they taught me a bunch. And one of my greatest mentors, may she rest in peace, Carla Chavez, was my lead organizer for some time, and she would challenge a very young organizer to get rid of the machismo and think differently and not be so much embedded into the patriarchy. And she said, "You should read this book called The Origin of the Family: Private Property in the State." It's a book by Frederick Engels. Sounds familiar. But it talked about how capitalism and patriarchy were created at the same time. It's a fascinating book, and it was incredibly eye-opening. And so, I guess what I want to reflect to y'all is, when you see me up here fighting against corporations, I don't see that different from fighting against patriarchy. It's not a coincidence that the people in power are men. They've accumulated money. They've property, they've gone, they control a lot of the religions. They control government. They control everything. And so, I will continue to learn from y'all. I will continue to mold my beliefs, but I hope you know that I will always try to be a fierce, fierce advocate, someone fiercely in solidarity, and just want to say thank you again for, for this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Soto Martinez. Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just applaud the presentations made, the personal presentations made by our council colleagues. You've done us proud and helped us really to understand and appreciate the importance of calling out, you know, sexual violence as it, as it occurs. We've got to do more than just wear denim. We have to act and make sure that our programs and policies are reflective of that, of having an unbiased approach. So, again, thank you for underscoring the importance. Thank you for calling us out. Thank you for reminding us, and thank you for being a part of this great body. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, because I like to not only be the only person calling things up, so I appreciate you. But colleagues, again, on, on this important commemoration, 26 years of this advocacy and work, really grateful to Peace Over Violence because you're in the work every single day. Thank you for allowing us to be a partner in support of the incredible work that you all do. And rest assured, you have a majority council that is equally committed to ensuring that this is not a performative moment, but it's a sustained work. And so, we appreciate you, and thank you for being part of holding everybody's feet to the fire, because it's so often that people say one thing and do another. Let's keep it daylight, in the daylight every day, and we're happy to march alongside you to continue this work and this fight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. A big, big round of applause for our Denim Day celebration here in LA City Hall.
To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off-topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are Items Number One, Items 29 through 36, and Items 38 through 49. So, again, let me repeat. The items open for public comment on the agenda are Items Number One, Items 29 through 36, and Items 38 through 49. Item 37 has been continued to May 7. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. So, just to be clear, if your item that you came here to speak about today is not open for public comment, you can do so during the one minute of general public comment. I have a couple more announcements. If I could have the interpreters make this one, the first one allowed to the room, please? So, we have two wonderful interpreters who help us with people who require Spanish-language interpreters.
Tenemos dos maravillosos intérpretes aquí para ayudar con las personas que van a dar comentario público en español.
And in order to help them out and to help you out, if you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences when you are here for public comment, so the interpreters can interpret.
Y en orden para ayudarlos a ellos y también ayudarles a ustedes, por favor, hagan pausa en medio de sus oraciones para que ellos puedan interpretar.
Don't worry. We will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
No se preocupe, pararemos su tiempo mientras que los intérpretes están interpretando. En ese caso, ustedes tendrán la misma cantidad de tiempo que todos los demás.
And one more final announcement to the room. The way that public comments work is that the staffers will call out names. That is at random. So, in order to help run an efficient public comment, we would ask that you please wait until you hear the name you signed up under before lining up. So, after you hear your name called, you can line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. You can line up in any order once you hear your name called. Thank you.
I will now call names for public comment. Diane Z., Sophia Mendoza, Kirsten Peterson.
So, again, can we just repeat the names one more? Sorry.
Again, the names are Diane Z., Sophia Mendoza, Kirsten Peterson.
So, again, once you hear your name called, please feel free to line up on the left-hand side of council chambers. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Well... Oh, can we make sure? Hello, hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Well, I want to speak to the Gene Day one, the proclamation, and I don't know the numbers. I'm just going to go and, but I want to do public comment too. It's on the agenda, the Gene Day thing, and if you're going to act like a patriarchy, whatever, and not let me speak on it, then shame on you.
But you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
And don't forget, you still owe me an apology, because you got me off-topic the other time, and I was on-topic, and I'm still waiting for my apology, Mr. Groot.
Can you hold her time? I believe I apologized before, and we also gave your time, but to the extent that I didn't, I'm sorry.
You did not. Thank you very much. That means a lot to me. Okay, I want to talk first on the Gene Day. I, I love that the, the women of this council are, you know, standing up against sexual violence. I will not sit here and tell my own story, because I'm not, I don't really come to talk about me. I come to talk about the abuses of Scientology. And I don't know if you guys are aware, since you're helping victims, that there's a case right now going on in LA, okay, about a child bride who Scientology forced to marry her sexual abuser to cover up the sexual abuse. So, as the women, and everyone's wearing jeans, can you please also focus on changing the laws where children cannot be brides? Very important, okay? And how many people have come here, spoken here, or police commissioned, saying, "We're victims. We've been sexually abused, raped, groomed at Scientology," and it falls on deaf ears? So, as these wonderful, as you all stand up here, fighting for, you know, victims, please remember, there's people here coming here every single, like, what, three times a week to talk about victims. I know, I have my minutes over. I got to move on. I got it. Okay. About the randomizer, though, I know Smoke and Scan and I both want proof. Okay, I know the next one.
So, general public comment. You're welcome to do so during general.
Okay. And the next one is the Hollywood Walk of Fame one, okay? I don't think we should give Mr. Gervais, no, no offense to him, he can be really funny, but like, I am right now, I, I would rather see real-life people honored, okay? What about people who fight for victims, okay? What about victims? How about the victims of Scientology? What about people who do real things and make a real difference? Like, just, you know, "Oh, I'm funny, and I, I get famous, and I make a lot of money." Like, what does that rate? Like, we need to start changing our, I think, focus on what a hero is, okay? It's people that really make a difference. And I'm curious on replay if Smoke and Scan agrees. We'll see. You know, we don't always agree, but I think we agree a lot. But anyway, the next one is, oh, about the law firm one. I'm concerned because he, you're trying to hire this lawyer, and he's a big, you know, lawyer for land use stuff, but Scientology has hired Bill Delvec as a lawyer, and I'm just concerned about conflict of interest. And I would ask that you please make sure there's no connections or ties, and that anyone that needs to be, you know, signed up for, you know, whatever. I'm just concerned about that, because there's a lot of shenanigans going on, and I don't like it. And I know Smoke and Scan don't like it either. That I know. Is this my public comment?
Yes, general public comment. Go ahead.
And Smoke and Scan and I want to know about the randomizer, okay? We want to know about the randomizer. Is it that you put our names in a basket and pull it out? Is it like some little computerized thing? Is it a figment of our imaginations? Does it really exist? Because there needs to be accountability and transparency. And we want to know about the randomizer, because there's too many, like, yes, I'm glad, you know, I, like, there's times if I don't get called, that's ridiculous. I want to know about the randomizer, right? And I know Smoke and Scan does too, right? Smoke and Scan, you want to know about this, this alleged randomizer, okay? But I'm wasting my time on that. I've spoken again and yet again on the victims of Scientology and also the abuses of the public, of their system of permits. I told you that I'm about to sue the city because I have yet again been restricted, and you guys keep giving them permits in spite of their civil, continuous civil rights violations. Please stop doing it. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Sophia Mendoza, y necesito traducción.
Good day. My name is Sophia Mendoza. I need translation.
Good morning. And which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias. De qué artículo está hablando?
Comentario público.
General, uh, public comment.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Adelante. Tiene un minuto. Si, soy miembro de ACE, y estoy aquí para pedirle, por favor, que apoye las demandas de Keep L.A. House para actualizar Larso.
I am here as a member of ACE to ask you to approve what is being asked of you by Keep L.A. House in terms of Larso.
Al presidente Harris y a la concejal Heather Hatt.
To President Harris Dawson and Councilwoman Heather Hutt.
La semana pasada tuvimos un tanjo, y no se presentó ninguno de ellos. Es una pena que no hayan podido ir ni su staff.
The last week, we had a town hall, and it's a shame that neither you could show up or your staff.
Más de cien residentes se reunieron.
More than a hundred residents got together.
En su distrito.
In your district.
Y exigimos que actualicen Larso. No nos decepcionen que ustedes y sus personal no pudieron asistir, escuchar a los inquilinos en su distrito.
And we urged you to accept Larso and were devastated, and were sad that you couldn't show up, you or your people, to listen to your constituents in your district.
Como constituyente, me gustaría hablar con un diputado, si, del distrito 8 y del distrito 10, sobre las demandas de Larso y entregar peticiones de sus constituyentes.
As a constituent, I would like to speak to someone from District 10 and District 8 to mention the demands that we have in terms of Larso.
Okay.
Les pido que, por favor, lo hagan lo más pronto posible. Gracias.
I'm asking you to do it as soon as possible. Thank you.
I will now call more names for public comment. Bonnie Blue, Tomasa Martinez, Skylar Myers.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Come on, man. You don't even ask my name. That's weird. Okay, let's start with on the denim item. I'm really happy to hear about the denim item, because I was a sexual violence when I was a kid. Because when I was one years old, my father was violently taking a shower for me, and he... And he was touching me all over for 20 minutes, non-stop. That, I didn't give him my consent. But however, I was violated every day until I was the age of five or something. That's more than 1,500 days of sexual violence. When I report to the LAPD, nobody take my report. And then I'm glad our council member Hernandez talked about this Sexual Violence Day. And I can assure our council member Hernandez that every rapist will stay 100 feet away from you. I'm pretty sure that she is very intimidating, you know, when she ever faces any sort of...
You need to move on to another item.
Sexual violence. Item number 40. Item number 40 is some sort of enforcement against the sitting, sleeping, storing, maintaining, placing personal properties on the, on the street. Okay, so I want to ask our city manager, that, our city attorney, that if I am homeless, and then somehow, sitting on the street, sleeping on the street, will end me up in jail. So I want to ask our city attorney, where do I go? So if I don't have a home, if I don't have a toilet, and I use the toilet on Figueroa Street, but somehow you have this kind of rule right here that will jeopardize me, that will end me up with a citation by the LAPD, will end up me in a jail by the LAPD, but I have nowhere to go? I told you I knock on your door, can I use your bathroom, but you denied me? So I want to go to the hotel, I want to use the toilet, they denied me. So right now, you're asking me that I'm gonna get arrested for sleeping on the street. So where do I go? Now, let's move on to item number 43. Item number 43 is about World Wish Day. Yes, city attorney, I have a wish. My wish is that every time you can select my name randomly guaranteed. So World Wish Day, I have a wish that in the future, whenever I go to Figueroa Street for Figueroa services, I will not get a randomly selected Figueroa prostitute to giving me services. I want, I want my services provided by the specific Figueroa lady, not randomly selected Figueroa lady. I have a wish that in this city council, you will no longer discriminate me on my ability to speak public comment simply because I have a three-inch size.
General public comment.
Now, let's move on to general public comment. I want to continue to assure this Sexual Violence Day. With some woman, I understand, this is a huge concern, but I want to assure our council District 1 that no man want to ever stand anywhere near you, 100 feet within your distance. So unless there's a violent rapist has a size of 100 inch, so I want to make sure, assure our council District 1 that you have no concern, you have no worry about this sexual violence for the rest of your life. You are so safe, simply because the way you look.
Speaker, you are now being repetitive, I'm gonna ask that you, you can continue your general public comment, but...
I will continue to this sexual violence, that right now, we have sexual violence on Figueroa Street every single day. I spoke on Figueroa item every single day, and then our city attorney continued to use a random, randomly selected method to provide services to randomly selected Figueroa prostitute.
Speaker, your time has expired. As we wait for the next speaker to come up, I know there's a lot of new faces here. If it's your first time here, just recognize that during public comment, people express their views in a lot of different ways. It is, I wish I could say that that is the worst thing that you're going to hear today, but it very well might not be. Keep in mind that the Brown Act does not require you, members of the public, to listen to the other speakers. So if you have headphones, and you would like, you are more than welcome to put those on. You're also welcome to take a stroll outside, look around City Hall, and come back at any point during this meeting. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut off the staffer who's reading names.
Before the speaker speaks, I'd like to call a few more names. Dorcia White-Brake, Hassan Suniga, Veronica Torres.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, Larso. L.A. rent stabilization ordinance. I'm giving a general public comment.
A general public comment, okay. One minute for general public comment, go ahead.
All right, for sure. So, my name is Skylar, I work with Sage and District 2, and I'm giving general public comment. I'd like to request that you please support Keep L.A. House's demands for updating the Larso ordinance. Larso is an incredibly important law, but its current allowed rent increases are too high for Angelenos. We have hundreds of petitions here demonstrating Angelino's support for an update. I urge the city council to adopt Keep L.A. House's demands for the RSO formula to cap increases at 60% of CPI with no minimum increase and remove unfair additional increases for utilities and extra occupants. During the rent moratorium in the city of LA, the rate of evictions were down. And now that the moratorium has ended, even with the current RSO protections, evictions filed in the city are similar to the numbers prior to the protections, prior to the pandemic. So I'd like to request, along with my colleagues and members of the community, that stronger protections are passed.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, my name's not that important. I'm from District 8, I'm the president, actually, of District 8 for ACE. And I'm here to talk directly to my, our council district president, Marquise Harris Dawson, and to Heather Hutt as well. We had a council, we actually had a town hall meeting recently. We were really disappointed that no one showed up to represent your offices. This is super important. We have people who are actually being put out of their homes because they can't afford these rent increases. So we're asking you to support Larso. Larso, L-A-R-S-O, Larso. Cap the rent at 3%. We need this help. My rent is going up every single year, my neighbor's rent is going up every single year, more, 10% or more. This is not affordable. So I'm here to say, please, support Keep L.A. House's demands for updating Larso. Council President Harris Dawson, last week, I already told you, we had the town hall. It was really disappointing, over 100 people came. This is some things we want to really give to you today, please, can you take this?
If you'd like to, if you have any documents to provide to the council, you can provide it to the sergeant, but your time has expired, we have to move on to the next speaker. In fact, just as a general announcement for the room, I know that the time can go rather quickly. So if you are unable to finish your comments during the one-minute general public comment or your other allotted time, if it's about an agenda item, you are more than welcome to provide additional written comments. That's at lacouncilcomment.com. So the URL where you can find that is at the top of every single council agenda. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
I'm gonna do public comment today.
You have one minute, go ahead.
You got it. My name is Hassan, I'm a constituent in District 8. Good morning, Marquise, good morning, everybody council members that have been having meetings in the last six months around Larso. I'm happy that I met with Bob, and we were able to talk about some conversations. I'm happy to talk to Nita Ramins, and Odo Yunises, and Hugo Soto every other week. And it's really, it's really refreshing to hear that. But like Dorcia said, Marquise, it is a little upsetting when we are door-knocking close to 400 doors with Sage, and DSA, and clergy, like Pastor, Dr. Pastor, there is there, Harris Dawson Davis, the pastor of the church that we had the tonho. He was pretty upset. I'm not gonna lie, Marquise, we respect it as somebody, somebody to at least listen to these constituents' issues that the rent is too damn high, that some of them don't have toilets to use, some of them don't have electricity sometimes. And then out of all that, we don't see somebody from our district, so get it together, man.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call a few more names. Michaela Scales, Lucia Abad, Lily Phillips, Maria Sanchez.
Good morning.
Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Veronica Torres, vengo del Distrito 8. Para pedirle a los concejales que aprueben el máximo del 3% de aumento de renta.
Hi, my name is Veronica Torres. I am from District 8, and I'm here to give a comment regarding capping the rent at 3%.
En mi caso, yo he sufrido hasta el 40% de aumento. Por eso estoy aquí para pedirles de favor que, que nos aprueben, nos urge, porque ya va a ser para julio, este el aumento.
I'm personally here because I have suffered a 40% increase in my rent, and that is the reason why I'm coming to give this comment. And I'm asking you to please approve this, because we really need it. Thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, I believe just general comment.
Okay, and before you begin, feel free to move the microphone if you need to, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Hello, council members and community members. My name is Michaela Scales, and I'm a resident of Council District 1, living in the MacArthur Park area. I'm also a graduate student in the Masters of Social Work program at USC. And most importantly, I'm a mother to a two-year-old son. I'm here today not just as a student, but as a mom who is deeply concerned for the safety and well-being of her child and all families in our community. When I need to walk to run everyday errands, whether it's picking up food, stopping by the post office, or just walking to the corner store, my son and I are forced to walk in the street of my residential block because the sidewalks are completely blocked, tents, scattered trash, and drug paraphernalia cover the walkway. There have been moments where I've had to dodge broken glass or step around used needles while trying to keep my two-year-old safe. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a public safety issue, and it's unacceptable. I want to be clear that I have compassion for our unhoused neighbors. I know that people living on the streets are often struggling with mental health, addiction, or economic hardship. But this situation puts both residents and unhoused at risk, and it's not humane for anyone, especially not children when our sidewalks are becoming impossible. Thank you.
And again, if you have additional comments that you'd like to make, you can do so in writing at lacouncil commenting.com. It's, I understand the time goes quickly. It's not that people don't want to hear from you, but we do need to treat everybody equally and give everybody about the same amount of time. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días en español.
Hi, yes, I have a Spanish comment.
Mi nombre es Lucina Abad, y estoy aquí para apoyar la demanda de Keep L.A. para actualizar Larso.
My name is Lucina Abad, and I am here to support the demands for Keep L.A. House.
Mi comentario público es referente al porqué los concejales McQuin y la señora Hutt. Tuvimos un foro, señores. Creo que la comunidad merece un respeto. Esperamos que nos escuchara. Su comunidad necesita de ustedes. Queremos hablar acerca de la demanda de los aumentos de renta.
So I'm here to give a public comment directly to Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson and Mrs. Hutt. We had a community forum, and we deserve the respect of you being there and listening to the needs and the wants that we have regarding Larso.
Pedimos que ustedes se pongan en los zapatos de los inquilinos, que a veces tenemos que pagar la renta en vez de comprarnos una comida decente.
And we ask you to put yourselves in our shoes as tenants, where we have to make the decision of either paying the rent or having a good meal.
Espero una solución de parte de ustedes y apoyo para toda la gente, para que todos aquellos vivíamos en paz en la casa.
And we hope to get a solution from you and some sort of support for the people that want to stay housed.
Que por falta de un hogar vayamos a parar las calles. Necesitamos su apoyo. Gracias.
Because without housing, we're gonna end up on the street, and we need your support. Thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Yep.
Now?
Buenos días a todos, mi nombre es María Sanchez. Soy organización de ACE y soy del Distrito 9.
Hi, good morning, my name is María Sanchez. I am from the organization ACE, and I live in District 9.
Estoy dando comentario público, público general.
And I'd like to give a general public comment.
Les pido, por favor, que apoyen la demanda de Keep L.A. House para actualizar la de Larso. Es una ley incrementada importante, pero sus actualizaciones aumentan de alquiler permitidos con sus demasiados altos para los inquilinos. Y yo como madre tengo un hijo de educación especial y estoy conviviendo con familiares porque no alcanzo a pagar la renta porque es demasiado alto. Y queremos su apoyo.
Señora Sanchez, un momento. So I'm giving a general public comment to ask for you to support the Keep L.A. House demands and to support and update the new Larso formula, because this law is incredibly important, because the increases in rent, the annual increases are way too high. And I personally, I have a child that has special needs, and I've had to live with family because I can't afford to pay the rent on my own.
Y tenemos que aquí cientos de participaciones de sus contribuyentes a favor de una actualización. Los aumentos máximos es del 60% del IPC o el 3% sin aumentar el mínimo y eliminar los aumentos adicionales injustas para los servicios públicos y los ocupantes adicionales.
And so, we had over 100 attendees that have, and constituents that have shown that they are in favor of this update to the Larso formula to a 60% of the IPC index without any additional percentages for utilities or additional occupants.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días, es hablar de Larso.
Hi, I'm here to speak about Larso.
So you have one minute for general.
En un minuto para el comentario general.
Mi nombre es María Vargas, y estoy hablando sobre este, esto que está afectando a toda la comunidad que tiene bajos ingresos por el incremento de renta que están haciendo ahorita el 10%. Me gustaría que hubiera la posibilidad que lo mantenga al 3% porque incluso los apartamentos que supuestamente están controlados se están subiendo al 10%. Como para mí que yo tengo 70 años.
Señora Vargas, un momento para que le pueden interpretar.
Okay, sorry.
So, good morning, my name is María Vargas. I am here to talk about something that is really important to the low-income community, which is in regards to this allowable 10% increase to our annual, to our rent annually. And I would like there to be an opportunity to have just a cap at 3% that includes apartments as well, and other areas that have rent control.
Adelante.
Go ahead.
Por ejemplo, para mí que me dan mil dólares de retiro, y la mayoría tengo que pagar 956. ¿Cuánto me queda para pagar luz y gas y comida?
And so, for me...
Porque me aumentaron el 10%.
For me, I receive $1,000 in retirement income.
Con dos días de anticipación.
Okay, so can we hold her time really quick? So I'm gonna ask this. I'm gonna ask that the interpreters, feel free to hop in if we need to ask the Spanish speakers to pause every once in a while. And if I can have you make this announcement to the room one more time. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences, so that the interpreters can actually interpret.
Bueno momento, tengo que dar un anuncio para toda la sala. Si ustedes requieren un intérprete de español o inglés, por favor, no se olviden de dar una pausa después de cada frase para permitir la interpretación.
We want to hear what you have to say, and the best way to make sure that that happens is to pause so that the interpretations are accurate.
Queremos escuchar lo que tienen que decir, así que la mejor manera de poder hacerlo sería dar una pausa después de cada frase para que podamos escuchar la interpretación.
And don't worry, just like now, the time is paused, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
Y no se preocupen, como ahora hemos dado pausa a su tiempo, así que va a abrirse bien la misma cantidad de tiempo que los otros comentaristas. Gracias.
Go ahead.
Entonces, señora, voy a empezar a interpretar lo que usted acaba de decir, que es que usted recibe mil dólares de jubilación y que tiene que pagar la renta que es de 956. Un momento.
I'm gonna start from where she last left off. I receive $1,000 a month in retirement, and my rent is $956. There is no... There is no room for me to even pay utilities out of that amount. Adelante, señora.
Yo solamente les quiero decir que así como nosotros, la comunidad, nos damos nuestro voto a todos los políticos, así que los políticos tratan de ayudarnos a la comunidad. Gracias. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that we, as community members, are the ones that are voting for our politicians. So we're asking for our politicians to help us and to support us. Thank you.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call a few more names. Maria Briones, Elizabeth Hernandez, Manuel Mireles.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak to a public comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes. I prefer especially to direct my comment for everybody, but this is special for Heather Hutt. I'm from District 10. And I want, first of all, to please help us with Larso. And we really need it. And I'm very disappointed about the Wednesday 23 meeting that we have, and she never show up. Never came over with us for that appointment. So that's very, for me, it's unprofessional, you know? Please, Larso is very important to us. Housing, we need your support. Like you guys, when you're on our boat, you have it. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Español, por favor.
Spanish, please.
Yes, go ahead, but which items would you like to speak to?
En qué punto quisiera dar su comentario, señora?
Comentario público general.
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto adelante.
Mi nombre es Tomasa Martínez, pertenezco al Distrito 14. Soy miembro de ACE.
My name is Tomasa Martínez. I am from District 14, and I'm a member of ACE.
Por favor, apoyen las demandas de Keep L.A. housed para actualizar a Larso. Presidente del Consejo, Harry Dawson. La semana pasada, más de 100 residentes de L.A. se reunieron en su distrito para exigir actualizaciones a Larso.
And so I am here to ask for you to support the Keep L.A. housed demands and to update the Larso formula. I would like to say to the council president, Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, that last week, we had a meeting with over a hundred residents. Y adelante.
Nos decepcionó que usted y su personal no pudieron asistir y escuchar a los inquilinos en su distrito.
You and your staff were not able to come to this meeting and to listen to the concerns of the tenants.
Solamente necesito que apoyen Larso, ya que del 2020, mi dueño del departamento donde estoy me ha querido sacar. ¿Se imaginan ustedes si quieren terminar con los homeless, cuándo van a terminar con personas que estén viviendo en las casas, en las calles? Pónganse las pilas y pónganse a trabajar, por favor. Gracias.
So we're just asking you to please support this updated formula because in 2020, the owner of the apartment where I live was trying to get me out of the house. And just imagine the amount of people who are in their homes now to end up in the streets, and we're already having a crisis for homelessness. So I'm really asking you to get to work and to start supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. I wish that all council members pay attention to us as we are speaking because as I can see, everybody is involved in their own conversations or whatever else. We invited Mr. Marquis and Heather Hutt to a town hall. And none of them show up. We haven't heard any, I'm sorry, I could not attend. We must be respected as well as we respect you. We give you the support, we give you our votes, and we give you our voices, and they are not heard. We want you to support Larso. The changes had to be changed. We need them right now. A lot of people is gonna end up on the street. We are the second street, I mean, the second city in the whole United States with homeless. We don't need anymore. We need those changes now, not tomorrow, not tomorrow after, not next year or 20 years from now. We need them now, and we need the support, and I hope you guys do listen to us. We are your supporters. Without our support, you would not be here. Thank you.
General public comment.
Yes, good afternoon.
My name is Elizabeth, can I start? My name is Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm an organizer with ACE, and I would like for every single council member here to actually pay attention because what I'm seeing is that you guys are taking this time as a freaking break. This is not your time to have a break. This is when you guys are supposed to be listening to these people back here. But all I see is conversations all over, talking to people who you're not supposed to right now. You're supposed to be listening. You're supposed to be hearing these public comments. Marquis and Hunt, these people walk their asses off, walking those streets to get that town hall together. And what did you guys do? You guys didn't show up. There was none of you guys. There was nothing from you guys. And you can laugh all you want, Mr. Marquis. It's great. That is amazing that you take all this as a joke. But you just remember, when people is voting, they're not gonna get you the vote.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call a few more names. Joel Chuning, Krista Figueroa, Adam Smith.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes. My name is Matthew Carson. I am a part of ACE in the Eighth District. Councilman President Harris. We would greatly appreciate your attention, and we would like to have you to listen to us because the rent is too high. And we were all together, we have over a hundred residents that gathered and signed a petition. We need the 3% rent increase. I'm disabled, and I just got an increase of almost $300 on my rent. I cannot afford this. And we need you all to really help us because otherwise, we're going to be another part of the homeless population that you're going to have to deal with. And we don't want to be homeless. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Sure. Hi, my name is Manny, and I'm with Sage in District Two, but I live in District 14. And I'm giving general public comment. So please support Keep L.A.'s demands for updating the Larso. Larso is incredibly important law, but its current allowed rent increases are too high for Angelenos. We have hundreds of petitions here demonstrating Angelino support for an update. I urge the City Council to adopt Keep L.A. housed demands for the Larso formula to cap increases at 60% CPI or 3% with no minimum increase and remove unfair additional increases for utilities and extra occupants. I'm grateful that I live in a Larso-protected apartment, and I love living in my neighborhood. But with the current rent increase rates, I'm afraid that I may not be able to afford to rent where I live. Everything is becoming more expensive, and having large rental increases every year is not sustainable. This update on Larso is common sense and will ultimately benefit all Angelenos. We need to update this immediately. Thank you.
Hi, City Council. My name is Joel Chuning. I work as a civilian employee of the Los Angeles Police Department Evidence and Property Division.
Good morning. And which items would you like to speak to?
This is a general comment, sir.
General, go ahead.
I just want to comment, and it kind of ties in with what you guys were speaking to earlier. I appreciate all your support. Some of the things I handle every day are sexual assault kits, robberies, murders, and homicides. I'm an expert at what I do. And I would really hate for these positions to be cut along with a criminal forensics team because these items will not get handled in time. The officers' wait times and drive times will be greatly extended. The chain of custody will not be there, and it'll raise the legal liability for the city. But more importantly to me, this is a great city. I want to make sure everybody's safe, your constituents are safe, and I want to continue to serve the city of L.A. as a member of the LAPD as a civilian employee. Thank you very much.
Good morning, City Council members and community members. My name is Krista Figueroa, and I am an Evidence and Property officer. I'm a uniformed civilian. I work for the civilian workforce for the City of Los Angeles for LAPD. I am here today, and I stand in solidarity for all of the sexual assault victims. As an Evidence and Property officer, I have a huge responsibility. I book all evidence for misdemeanors and for felony crimes. Those crimes include sexual assaults, rapes, sex trafficking, murders. And I stand here today to let you know that there are 17 property officers, three supervisors, and one officer in charge that is all on the potential opportunity of layoffs. We have a critical role in our chain of custody from sworn officers that bring in all of the evidence for these heinous crimes. And we book that evidence, and we preserve that evidence so that our officers, our detectives, and our district attorney can go to court and put these people away, these monsters that commit these crimes. Please help us help you.
Speaker, your time has expired.
All the members of the community that have voted for you, we support. Thank you.
Again, we have to give everybody about the same amount of time. Thank you.
I'd like to call a few more names. Brendan Fisher, Wendy Sanchez, Janet Wieland. Again, those names were Brendan Fisher, Wendy Sanchez, Janet Wieland.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, public servants. My name is Brendan Fisher, and I live here in Council District 14. I'm here to advocate along with Keep L.A. housed in support of their demands to update Larso. While it's an incredibly important law, it's ultimately outdated. And right now, the allowable rent increases are far too high. And so I urge the City Council to adopt Keep L.A. housed demands for Larso formula to consider the cap increases at 60% CPI or 3% with no minimum increase and to remove the unfair additional increases for utilities and extra occupants. In the context of general economic uncertainty and the budget cuts and layoffs, this represents an opportunity for the City Council to give back to its community and reduce the economic burdens on an already rent-burdened city. Therefore, I strongly encourage you to consider these demands over the coming months. Thank you.
I'd like to call Eloisa Galindo, Irma Lopez, Lena Sullivan.
So if your name was called, please feel free to, I see people coming up now. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Puedo hablar sobre el punto de abuso sexual y comentario público general, por favor.
Hello, I would like to talk about the point of sexual abuse as well as general public comment, please.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Adelante, tiene un minuto.
Mi nombre es Eloisa Galindo. Soy miembro de ACE.
My name is Eloisa Galindo, and I am a member of ACE.
Hoy estoy aquí para pedirles a todos ustedes que pasen Larso un tope de renta.
Here I'm asking you all to pass the Larso rent cap.
Cuando nosotros hablamos del capitalismo es algo muy lógico. Si ustedes ven los edificios que parecen de edificios hermosos ahí, en el centro de Los Ángeles.
What we have been saying about capitalism is actually quite logical. If you look at those beautiful buildings that they have in the center of Los Angeles.
Esos son del capitalismo, de muchos que han pagado la campaña de muchos de ustedes. Por eso es que les hace difícil escuchar a la comunidad y pasar Larso.
Those are a product of capitalism. Those buildings are there built by the people who pay your campaigns. That's why you guys don't want to hear us when we talk about Larso.
¿Dónde está el señor Lee que es el que más está poniendo peros para pasar Larso?
Where's Mr. Lee, who's putting more and more obstacles in the way of passing Larso?
Uno de los problemas serios es que ustedes no saben que muchas homeless mujeres están siendo abusadas sexualmente todos los días.
One of the serious problems is that you don't recognize that it's homeless women who are being sexually abused day after day.
Esto es un problema muy serio, los desalojos y la falta de vivienda accesible.
This is a serious problem, the lack of affordable living spaces.
Es tiempo de que ustedes en verdad pongan leyes que protejan a los inquilinos.
This is important, and it's time for you guys to really put forth laws that protect renters.
Pasen Larso y no estén jugando con los intereses de los inquilinos.
But I'm gonna ask the interpreters to interpret the last portion, please. Go ahead.
Pass Larso and stop playing around with the interests of renters.
Good morning, Django. All items and general comment.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Before you begin, your time has not started. I want to make an announcement to the room. So as you saw earlier, people express their public comment in various ways. I suspect that some of these comments are going to be very offensive. So again, if you have brought headphones, if you'd like to put your fingers in your ears, you, the members of the audience, do not have to listen to the other public commentators. You can if you'd like, but just be warned that I expect there to be offensive content here.
Yeah.
Go ahead. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
That's right. So let's get on to number 33. Oh, my timer's up already? Shit. That was quick.
Hold on. Your public comment has not begun until the timer starts. We're trying to get the timer started. Mr. Spinner, do not disrupt this meeting. I am giving you instructions. This is not your public comment because the timer has not started yet. You will get your full time if you abide by the rules of this council. This is your first and only formal warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Item 33.
Go ahead.
I am. I'm on item 33.
So, Mr. Spinner, if you would not like to provide public comment, then you do not have to do so.
The government cannot compel me to speak, sir. First Amendment Coalition says I can do this. I'm silently protesting item number 33.
We go to the next speaker, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, Bob, you know how much lawsuits cost, right? This, not today, Bob. Not today.
You seem to be off topic, so we'll move you to general public comment.
Excuse me. I'm silently protesting item number 33. I am protesting it silently, and I'm gonna use sign language, sir.
Can we start the time for general public comment? I'm not sure if this is gang signs or what.
I'm doing it with gang hand signs. I'm publicly protesting number 33. I am on topic. Mooney Cow, I'm on topic. I'm on topic. I am protesting number 33 in my own selected content of speech, sir. So please, put my time back on the clock, sir.
We have not stopped you. You are still on the items, so stick to the items.
Okay, good, because you got a different-looking clock than my three minutes. Okay, good, because you've got a different-looking clock than my three minutes. You want, you know, you took away two minutes and twenty-two seconds of my goddamn time. Please put me back on the items, sir!
I just confirmed with the clerk, we did not reset your time. Stick to the items, or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Well, how come I'm on twelve seconds, man? I didn't even use a minute.
Okay, you've been asked politely, I'm going to move you to general public comment.
I'm trying to speak!
Go ahead. You have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Well, I'm on the items, sir. I've got two more minutes. I have two more minutes on my items, sir. Right? Right, Mooney Cow? Don't I have two more minutes before general, right?
And before the one minute of general public comment begins, I would ask, the quickest way to get through this is if we do not disrupt it. So, again, I appreciate your continued patience with this. Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, you got my continued patience. I'm trying to be patient.
Mr. Spindler, you have been warned. Do not disrupt me giving you instructions and trying to provide you your time for general public comment. Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Give me back my time on my items. I still got two minutes on the items, sir. Where's my other minutes? I said all items and general public comment. Where's my time? Oh, look at you there, big shot! Look at you! Your house is perfectly clean, isn't it?
Mr. Spindler, you addressed the council in general and not specific members.
And you know what? That's good. Because let me tell you something, okay? You robbed me of my two minutes on my items. That's $10,000 per minute. You illegally put me back on general, another $10,000. But I have very good news. Did you know that current price does not recuse himself correctly, and that could possibly land him back at prison? Did you know that? Stay tuned, motherfucker. Stay tuned. The fun is going to fucking begin.
Thank you again, everyone, for your patience. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias. Comentario público general, por favor, español.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
A good day. General public comment in Spanish. Tiene un minuto. Adelante.
Mi nombre es Irma Lopez. Estoy, soy miembro de Esaje, y estoy aquí para pedir que apoyen las demandas de Keep L.A. Housing.
Hi, my name is Irma Lopez, and I am here to urge you to pass the demands from Keep L.A., from Keep L.A. House.
Para que apoyen la ordenanza de Larso, pero que la actualicen. Tiene más de cuarenta años que no está siendo actualizada, y no nos perjudica a todos los inquilinos.
I want you to support Larso, but to update it. It's been more than forty years since it's been updated, and it's not correctly supporting us renters.
Pedimos que la actualicen con el tres por ciento de aumento de renta porque ahorita hay muchos incrementos que no se pueden pagar por los inquilinos.
We're asking you to pass it with a three percent rent cap, because the rent keeps going up, and it can be paid by a lot of the renters.
También pido que se eliminen aumentos injustos adicionales de servicios y servicios públicos y ocupantes adicionales.
I also ask that, I also ask that it not be permitted to incre, that it not be permitted to increment due to services and, to services and/or additional occupants.
Apoyen las demandas de L.A. Housing para Larso, por favor. Las comunidades lo necesitamos.
Please support the L.A. House demands for Larso. The communities need it.
Estoy aquí hablando por los inquilinos que no han sido escuchados.
I'm here speaking on behalf of the renters that have not been heard.
No queremos ver las calles con más, más homeless. No queremos familias desplazadas.
We don't want to see families evicted. We don't want to see the streets with more unhoused people.
Escuchen a su comunidad, gracias.
Listen to your community. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, please.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Lena. I'm here with Sage, as well as this wonderful, powerful group of tenants. Again, speaking in support of an update to the Larso formula. I'm in District 13, but I work with tenants across the city who are fighting illegal and/or extreme rent increases, trying their best to avoid falling into homelessness and stay in their housing, but they need help. They need this law to be updated, which hasn't been updated in over forty years. It's time to make Larso fair for tenants and cap the rent at three percent. We need the rent formula to be based on sixty percent of the Consumer Price Index with a cap of three percent and no floor. We have so many tenants here today expressing their support of this. We have hundreds of petitions. We've had the opportunity to turn them into council members for District 10 and District 8. For District 2, we have a set of petitions here that we'd love to pass over if a deputy could come and get these for me. That would be greatly appreciated. Tenants, support updating Larso. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you to everybody who came and spoke with us today. Thank you for your input to our process. We've taken forty-five minutes of public comment, and so now we'll move to regular business. Madam Clerk, what items are before us?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 1, 29, 31 through 36, 38, 39, 41 through 44, and 46 through 49, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item number eight, and that was called special for amendment, and also Councilmember Hernandez had comments.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, colleagues. On September 13th, 2024, a fire broke out at an inactive construction site in Chinatown, displacing over fifty residents and injuring several individuals, including one elderly man who was hospitalized in critical condition. Many residents were Section 8 tenants. The blaze, which spread to three nearby apartment buildings, also resulted in non-life-threatening injuries to four Los Angeles firefighters. This was the third known fire at that site, which had been abandoned since November 2022. Despite concerns raised after a previous fire in July, authorities cited limited law enforcement power. The Department of Building and Safety could only mandate fencing, and the LAPD required property owners' permission to act on trespassing. This incident is a glaring example of a broader issue in the City of Los Angeles, the public safety risk posed by neglected and uncompleted development sites. The Chinatown fire highlights the urgent need for stronger oversight and accountability measures for property owners and developers, particularly those with a history of inactive projects and repeated emergency calls. The current regulatory framework lacks the necessary tools to prevent similar disasters, leaving vulnerable communities at continued risk. The motion before you will begin to resolve these gaps by streamlining communication between departments. We need the right people at the table, including city planning. I would like to thank Councilmember Harris-Dawson, Council President Harris-Dawson, for seconding this motion, Councilmember Blumenfield for collaborating with our team, and the Plumb Committee for their thoughtful, thoughtful input. Colleagues, I urge your support on this motion so that we can deliver peace of mind for constituents who live, who live near these development sites. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Let's open the roll on this, Councilmember Hutt. Next item. All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item forty-five, please.
All right, Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item forty-five, a technical amendment has been circulated, and so...
All right, so this is as a minute? And you're asking for an i-vote?
And I'm asking for an i-vote.
All right, let's open the roll on this item as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right.
Thank you.
What's next?
Next would be item number eighteen, and there's an amendment on that one.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez.
On eighteen, on the amendment eighteen A, I'd like to request bifurcating.
Bifurcating? Madam Clerk?
Oh, to, oh, excuse me.
Yes.
To amend eighteen A to change recommendation three.
And is there a second to this amendment to add, to change recommendation three of the existing Transportation Committee report on today's agenda?
Okay.
All right, that's been moved to second. Councilmember Blumenfield?
I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment of eighteen A.
Of course, okay.
So I'm just reading it, and that it is substitute recommendations one and three, and I'm looking at the two things, and I don't see why they, why it couldn't also, they can't exist together. So I'd like to change it to be amended to add the following, and then have those instructions. So, in other words, to put it in lay terms, the amendment is asking to divide it up by district, seven hundred fifteen thousand, which is a pittance. It's like two speed humps per district. And the underlying motion is talking about doing it by equity, and the way, and having this equity list. And the way I look at it, all of our districts have a huge backlog of speed humps, and all of our districts have enough equity in our district that would be on those equity lists. So I would say, sort of, splitting the baby in this case, yeah, divided, divide this pittance of seven hundred fifteen by district, and then keep the requirements that say, you know, creating the equity list, and let each district pick off the equity list, speed humps in their district. So we're doing, we can do both of these, all of these instructions, to me, are not self, they're not exclusive of each other. So I'm going to change it from exclusive, meaning amending as a substitute to, to just saying be amended to add the following. So add, add Mr. Lee's recommendations to the underlying recommendations, and go with it that way. And from, from my perspective, we all have plenty of, we, speed humps in our district. Our districts are sizes of, you know, bigger than ninety-nine percent of the cities in America. If we can't find two speed humps in our district that require, that are equity-focused, then there's something wrong. And so this creates a little bit of geographic diversity, but, you know, equity, and it also creates the equity that we're looking for in the underlying document.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
I'm happy to second that amendment to my amendment. Colleagues, you know, I'll quite often, that you hear in the, in the Valley, that we, we are forgotten, that we provide the most tax base, and that programs like this constantly remove the ability for us as councilmembers to put these safety measures within our district. We're talking, you're exactly right, Councilman Blumenfield, we're talking about two locations. Again, two locations a year. Under this next formula, I will get zero. I will get zero every year, and I'm just asking that we try to make it, it's a, we're talking about two. If you fully fund a speed program later on for fifteen million dollars, if that gets programmed, I have no problem with this. But as it's funded now, it's two, two per district. So I'm asking, I'm asking you, I'm asking the Valley councilmembers to remember that, to hopefully fight for the Valley and fight for our fair share of the resources that the city, that the city has. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Rahman.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Lee, for your passionate advocacy for the Valley. I couldn't agree more that the Valley is often overlooked. This is why I've been fighting for more resources from our homelessness budget, but also from every piece of our public transit infrastructure. It's really important to make sure that we serve the Valley. That being said, I do want to say that this is a very small amount of money. The Transportation Committee spent a long time talking about this program. I believe, Councilmember Hutt, that you had, you know, we discussed the reason why this program was structured the way that it is. We talked with the department about the kind of metrics that we're using to identify where these speed humps go. And I just want to push back against the idea that good policymaking for the city means that you divide every pot of money by fifteen. That's not how a lot of our biggest issues are resolved. That's not how the city's needs are structured. And if you want money for two speed humps, I'm sure, Councilmember Lee, that there are pots of money that we can work with you on, you have pots of money that you yourself control. These are very, very important needs, and we have ways to find them. But when we have a citywide pot of money, and when we're talking about trying to address traffic violence, there are places in the city which are high sites of traffic violence. There are places in the city where there's lots of pedestrians who are walking. That's what this discussion in committee was about. And it was a thoughtful discussion, and I want to lift up the work of Chairwoman Hutt in that committee, and to support her recommendations as originally written, because I think those really reflected the needs of the city as a whole, and what is, what we're trying to do with this particular program. Once again, Councilmember Lee, I want to welcome your partnership in fighting for the Valley in the way that it needs to be fought for. But again, for certain kinds of policies, when we're trying to address citywide issues, dividing by fifteen is not always the answer.
All right, seeing no other speakers on these items at this point, Madam Clerk, can you tell us where we are and what we're voting on?
I am not quite sure. Councilmember Rahman?
Council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay, so with Mr. Blumenfield's amendment to the amendment, what I think is probably most prudent is we just bifurcate the items and vote them that way, on the individual items that are listed on the amendment.
So, so, Councilmember Rodriguez made an amendment to divide these instructions. That's one. And then Councilmember Blumenfield made an amendment to alter instruction number one. And then...
He basic, one, yeah, go ahead.
Well, well... Number one, mine was on eighteen A to alter the, it says be amended, instead of saying to substitute, to change it to be amended to add the following, and add...
To add one and three to the existing Transportation Committee report on today's agenda.
Right. Which doesn't nullify what's already there, it just adds these two.
Right. Right.
So under, under the rules, in terms of what, the last amendment, the amendment to the amendment would go first, then the, then the amendment, and then the underlying motion.
So, to be clear, Bob? Because I think that was, I assume that was friendly?
Well, Mr. Lee seconded it, so...
Okay.
Okay, so it's, so it's to add, not replace, because the amendment, so Mr. Lee introduced an amendment, eighteen A, which the language as it's presented would replace the recommendations as listed in the report. Bob changed it, amended that amendment to add rather than replace. So that is friendly, correct?
Okay.
Okay, so that is where we are currently with this amendment. I'd still like to bifurcate those items and take each one individually. Got it?
Yes. So then, the, your, your wish to bifurcate is to vote on the recommendation number one in the eighteen, on the eighteen A?
Correct.
As a separate vote, as well as to vote on the recommendation number three on the amendment separately. Okay. So since you brought this up last, then it is best for, to vote on, the first vote would be the recommendation on the amendment, which is to instruct the Department of Transportation to divide the speed hump program budget of seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars evenly between the fifteen council districts in both the present and future fiscal year. That would be the first vote of Council, Mr. President.
Councilmember Nazarian.
Council President, point of order, I just, I'm trying to understand, if we have a motion, friendly motion and a second, aren't we just voting on this item now?
No.
I just want to make sure, I know, I understand how this is being done. I'm still figuring it out.
So we have two things before us. One of them is eighteen A, which we're voting, we would vote on that as amended by Mr. Blumenfield in as, in as much as that was a friendly amendment. We have a second amendment, which is my understanding that we have to vote on first, which is to bifurcate instruction number one and instruction number three in eighteen A. So, so we have to, I don't see how... So, so we have to, I don't see how you vote on this without voting for the bifurcation first.
Yes, council may vote on whether to bifurcate yes or no first.
All right. Anybody else want to add complexity to this? All right? All right, so our first vote is Councilmember Rodriguez's amendment to bifurcate instructions one and three from each other. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, three noes.
All right. Now it seems logical, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, it seems logical that we would vote on one, then three.
Yes.
Since they've been bifurcated.
Exactly. So this is the vote on recommendation one, which is to divide the 715,000 evenly between the 15 districts.
All right.
No, that, that would be the third recommendation, and that's the next vote. So this is just on recommendation one on 18A, which is to instruct DOT to divide the speed hump program budget of 715,000 evenly between the 15 council districts in both the present and future fiscal year. So that is the current vote at this time.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Councilmember Blumenfield?
Yeah, no, so I'm speaking to that item we were about to vote on, just to make it very clear that what we're voting on is splitting it, but we're splitting it in a way that we are also maintaining the equity focus criteria, instructing them to use the equity lens. So within our districts, they would use everything that has been put forward in the program, and we would each have two equity-focused speed humps.
So equity by district, as opposed to equity by the city. Councilmember Nazarian?
Sorry, I missed the last vote. For the record, I'm a, I'm a no on the bifurcating. Just wanted to correct that.
All right.
Thank you.
Does that change the outcome of bifurcation?
No.
No, the bifurcate vote as, with Mr. Nazarian as a no, is 11-4, and bifurcate still passes.
All right.
At this...
District, not by district.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so let's open the roll on instruction number one, as amended by Mr. Blumenfield. Let's close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, eight noes.
So the vote on recommendation number one fails.
All right, and now we have recommendation number three, if I understand correctly?
Yes, so that one is recommendation...
Hold on, Madam, hold on, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Rahman?
That, right now, the way that this is written, it's saying substituting recommendation number three in the original Transportation Committee report. It, it's adding it as a recommendation, as opposed to substituting any of the existing committee recommendations. I just wanted to clarify that that's what we're doing.
That would, that would be, okay, at this time, council's going to take a vote on item one, and then item three, and then there is amendment Blumen...
We just, we just did one.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm just summarizing. And then, then there is the amendment Blumenfield, Lee, which is to add the, to the existing transportation report, items one and three of 18A.
I, I, I think, Madam Clerk, we just voted on item one as amended by Mr. Blumenfield. So we took care of that. So now we have item number three.
Okay.
And we want, and, and I think the idea of this is to add this to the Transportation Committee report, not substitute it for it.
Correct.
Got it?
Yes.
That was already, Blumenfield didn't pass, so it would have to be a...
Okay, so I'd like to amend this, amend, amending motion, to say that we are not substituting recommendation three, we are adding the language of this recommendation to the existing Transportation Committee recommendations.
Thank you so much for that clarity, Councilmember Rahman. Let's open the roll on adding instruction number three to the Transportation Committee report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next? So do we need to vote the full transportation report as amended at this time, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, yes.
Okay. All right, so let's open the roll on the full committee report as amended by the various votes that we've just taken. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
That would be thirteen ayes and two noes.
I think you mean thirteen yeses and two noes.
Yes.
Got it, okay. What's next?
Next would be item 40, and that was called separately for a separate vote by Councilmember Hernandez.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, three noes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item 30, and that is closed session, sir.
All right, I'll ask the sergeants and the council to help us prepare the room for closed session. If you are not subject matter staff of a council office, the mayor, the comptroller, or the city attorney's office, I ask you to vacate the premises, the doors the other direction, Mr. Spindler.
Mr. Attorney, can you let the public know what there is to report out of this closed session?
Mr. President, may I call the roll first?
Yes, please.
That would be Bloomfield, Harrison, Hernandez, Hutter, Geraldo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yoslovsky, 14 members and a court, Mr. President.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President. While there is nothing to report out of closed session, there will need to be a motion for council to take action.
Councilmember Bloomfield has moved. I'll second.
Okay, then, Mr. President, council may vote on the motion to adopt the city attorney report dated April 14, 2025.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 yeses.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
That clears yes, sir.
Announcements, members, announcements? All right, seeing no announcements, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions, and before adjourning for an adjournment, all right, councilmember Geraldo.
I would like to be recorded as a no vote for item 40, thank you.
I, I, is that possible, Madam Clerk? Given we posted and referred already? It seems like it's not.
I'm so sorry.
I can change the vote to, now that I located the vote, Mr. President, it is possible, because the meeting has yet to adjourn, so the change would be councilmember Geraldo would be like a no, and for the record, item 40 is 11 yeses and four nos, and the motion still passes.
All right. Now I'll ask if there are adjourning motions on either side of the horseshoe, seeing none, we're adjourned, thank you so much, everybody.
As after the Camp and Wusley fires, we restored water nearly a year and a half faster than after the Camp fire, and we restored power in just two months. We know the faster we can rebuild, the faster we can heal. For those who have lost a home, each and every day is a day too long, right? Because home is at the heart of healing, and that has been the North Star of our recovery efforts, to get people home. Angelinos, we are turning the corner on crime in Los Angeles, and we will not go back. Last year homicides fell by 14 percent, the number of shooting victims fell 19 percent, and we've intensified safety efforts on Metro. We have cracked down on organized retail theft, and we are acting boldly around MacArthur Park. The homelessness crisis is a humanitarian crisis, and it affects everyone, those without a home, and those who worry about what they see outside of their home. Inside Safe represents a major change. Instead of waiting on expensive new housing to be built, we tapped L.A.'s supply of underused motels to bring people inside immediately. Inside Safe has cleared thousands of tents outside of schools, storefronts, and homes citywide, and after years of increasing homelessness, we are finally reversing that trend, and homelessness is down, and that includes a 10 percent reduction in street homelessness, and a 38 percent reduction in makeshift structures and tents. Now, all of this comes as nationwide homelessness went up by 18 percent, but not in Los Angeles. Thank you for the honor of being your mayor, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has surpassed ambitious goals to clear wildfire debris in the Palisades. Now 100 days on from the fires, Mayor Karen Bass, city leaders, and the city librarian thanked the Army from the site where the Palisades Branch Library once stood.
We're here at the Palisades Branch Library site, which unfortunately was destroyed in the Palisades fire, but at 100 days since the fire, we're thanking the Army Corps of Engineers for the incredible work they've done throughout this community, but especially here at the Palisades site where they've done and completed debris cleanup, there was a 30-day window to complete it, they did it in six days.
In this first 100 days of this recovery effort, we've been able to clear about 4,400 properties, out of that 4,400, about 2,300 are fully complete, and one of those is the library. So the next steps for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are to not slow down at all. We are focused on safely completing this mission. We have the highest number of crews out in the communities clearing debris that we've ever had since the start of this operation, and we're going to keep up that sense of urgency to get through all of the clearance, so really the community can then focus on rebuilding.
This has been a journey with a lot of devastation, and loss, and grief, but every single time I am in the Pacific Palisades, I see the forward progress. Things are happening here at an incredible pace. I just got back from Lahaina last night, and while each community's journey is different and has its own unique challenges, seeing other places rebuilding and recovering gives us a peek around the corner for what's next for us too, and I come away feeling hopeful about the future.
I think it's absolutely wonderful that everyone's showing up to try to rebuild, and it just is a reminder of how important the public library is to people, and what the public library means to people, it's a true community center.
It feels great to know that the library is going to be rebuilt, and that they're going to bring everything that we had before back to the place, and I'm hoping that they also look towards bringing some of the memories that we have from the past, that will help us also remember and never forget that what we went through. There is an inertia right now that is insatiable for the community to come together, rebuild our public spaces, our private spaces, and reignite what was the Palisades.
At the Mobile Home Park in the Palisades, city, county, and state representatives marked 100 days since the devastating wildfires. Leaders pledged to rebuild the homes and bring back this resilient community.
I want to commend Senator Allen on the selection of the site. I think it's symbolic in many ways, and as I look at the burned scars from the Mobile Home Park, I also notice the wildflowers poking up. We've got yellow, and orange, and purple wildflowers coming back, and I would tell you that that is the resiliency of this community, of this neighborhood, of this city, of our county, and of our state.
100 days, in some ways it feels like it's been so much longer, but it's such an emotional roller coaster. I feel very proud of what we have been able to do, but also the trauma that everyone is still going through, especially people who lost their homes.
We're marking the 100th day since the terrible wildfires that decimated this community and the beautiful community of Altadena. I wanted to bring folks here to the Palisades Bowl. It was a beautiful mobile home community of folks of modest means, one of the few pieces of affordable housing here on the coast in our area, and mark this anniversary.
As a resident, to be able to hear from our elected officials giving some insight in what does it look like to rebuild L.A., but I'm one of those...
Attorney, can you let the public know what there is to report out of this closed session?
Mr. President, may I call the roll first?
Yes, please.
That would be Bloomingfield, Harrison, Hernandez, Hut, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yow Slavsky, fourteen members and a court, Mr. President.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President. While there is nothing to report out of closed session, there will need to be a motion for council action.
Councilmember Bloomingfield has moved. I'll second.
Okay, then, Mr. President, council may vote on the motion to adopt the city attorney report dated April 14, 2025.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen yeses.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
They are posted and referred.
That clears the desk, sir.
Announcements, members, announcements, all right? Seeing no announcements, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. And before adjourning for an adjournment, all right? Councilmember Gerardo.
I would like to be recorded as a no vote for item forty. Thank you.
I, I... Is that possible, Madam Clerk? Given we posted and referred already? It seems like it's not.
I'm so sorry.
I can change the vote to, now that I located the vote, Mr. President, it is possible because the meeting has yet to adjourn. So the change would be Councilmember Gerardo would be like the no. And for the record, item forty is eleven yeses and four nos, and the motion still passes.
All right. Now I'll ask if there are adjourning motions on either side of the horseshoe. Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
As after the Camp and Oozley fires, we restored water nearly a year and a half faster than after the Camp fire, and we restored power in just two months. We know the faster we can rebuild, the faster we can heal. For those who have lost a home, each and every day is a day too long, right? Because home is at the heart of healing. And that has been the North Star of our recovery efforts, to get people home. Angelenos, we are turning the corner on crime in Los Angeles, and we will not go back. Last year homicides fell by 14%. The number of shooting victims fell 19%, and we've intensified safety efforts on Metro. We have cracked down on organized retail theft, and we are acting boldly around MacArthur Park. The homelessness crisis is a humanitarian crisis, and it affects everyone. Those without a home and those who worry about what they see outside of their home. Inside Safe represents a major change. Instead of waiting on expensive new housing to be built, we tapped L.A.'s supply of underused motels to bring people inside immediately. Inside Safe has cleared thousands of tents outside of schools, storefronts, and homes citywide. And after years of increasing homelessness, we are finally reversing that trend, and homelessness is down, and that includes a 10% reduction in street homelessness and a 38% reduction in makeshift structures and tents. Now, all of this comes as nationwide homelessness went up by 18%, but not in Los Angeles. Thank you for the honor of being your mayor. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has surpassed ambitious goals to clear wildfire debris in the Palisades. Now 100 days on from the fires, Mayor Karen Bass, city leaders, and the city librarian thanked the Army from the site where the Palisades Branch Library once stood.
We're here at the Palisades Branch Library site, which unfortunately was destroyed in the Palisades fire. But at 100 days since the fire, we're thanking the Army Corps of Engineers for the incredible work they've done throughout this community, but especially here at the Palisades site where they've done and completed debris cleanup. There was a 30-day window to complete it. They did it in six days.
In this first 100 days of this recovery effort, we've been able to clear about 4,400 properties. Out of that 4,400, about 2,300 are fully completed. And one of those is the library. So the next steps for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are to not slow down at all. We are focused on safely completing this mission. We have the highest number of crews out in the communities clearing debris that we've ever had since the start of this operation. And we're going to keep up that sense of urgency to get through all of the clearance so really the community can then focus on rebuilding.
This has been a journey with a lot of devastation and loss and grief. But every single time I am in the Pacific Palisades, I see the forward progress. Things are happening here at an incredible pace. I just got back from Lahaina last night. And while each community's journey is different and has its own unique challenges, seeing other places rebuilding and recovering gives us a peek around the corner for what's next for us, too. And I come away feeling hopeful about the future.
I think it's absolutely wonderful that everyone's showing up to try to rebuild. And it just is a reminder of how important the public library is to people and what the public library means to people. It's a true community center.
It feels great to know that the library is going to be rebuilt and that they're going to bring everything that we had before back to the place. And I'm hoping that they also look towards bringing some of the memories that we had from the past that will help us also remember and never forget that what we went through. There is an inertia right now that is insatiable for the community to come together, rebuild our public spaces, our private spaces, and reignite what was the Palisades.
At the Mobile Home Park in the Palisades, city, county, and state representatives marked 100 days since the devastating wildfires. Leaders pledged to rebuild the homes and bring back this resilient community.
I want to commend Senator Allen on the selection of the site. I think it's symbolic in many ways. And as I look at the burned scars from the Mobile Home Park, I also notice the wildflowers poking up. We've got yellow and orange and purple wildflowers coming back. And I would tell you that that is the resiliency of this community, of this neighborhood, of this city, of our county, and of our state.
A hundred days, in some ways, it feels like it's been so much longer, but it's such an emotional roller coaster. I feel very proud of what we have been able to do, but also the trauma that everyone is still going through, especially people who lost their homes.
We're marking the 100th day since the terrible wildfires that decimated this community and the beautiful community of Altadena. I wanted to bring folks here to the Palisades Bowl. It was a beautiful mobile home community of folks of modest means, one of the few pieces of affordable housing here on the coast in our area, and mark this anniversary.
As a resident, to be able to hear from our elected officials giving some insight in what does it look like to rebuild L.A., but I'm one of those people. And so to realize that there are people that are really standing up for us, it means a lot.
It's rebuilding homes, it's reopening schools, and it's restoring a community. That isn't going to happen overnight. But I know that with our shared sense of urgency, effective coordination, and leadership at every level of government, we are going to make it happen.
The Connect L.A. Job Fair is a bridge between job seekers and new careers. The Harbor Occupational Center, which hosted the fair, demonstrated to Councilmember Tim McCosker that bringing employers together creates more connections and career-building pathways.
We are at Harbor Occupational Center in San Pedro, in the Harbor area, and we are at a career and resource fair with over 40 providers here today, and we're expecting over a couple hundred attendees, folks looking for opportunities to advance their career, maybe new careers, and folks looking for resources towards great career advancement.
I think they're essential because it gives an idea what the local industry is requiring of the basic skills that they need in order to find gainful employment. The fact that they have in here Occupational Center adds another dimension to it that also explores opportunities for retraining in other industry sectors.
We have security, we have construction, we have medical, we have home care. We have a variety of jobs here, and there shouldn't be no reason someone can't find a career opportunity. We're not just here to assist them in getting jobs, we're here to assist them in getting careers.
These events are important for job seekers in the community because it puts you face-to-face with the hiring manager, with an employer, with a company that you might be able to start your career path in. I walked into one of these 10 years ago, and that's what got me on the career path that I'm in today.
This is our way of bringing the employers to the community. Instead of them having to go to the employers, we bring the employers to them.
Information is power. Go to booth to booth to booth, talk to folks. You may become surprised when you talk to somebody about a career that you never thought of.
Los Angeles International and Van Nuys airports have earned continued certification for reducing carbon emissions from the airports Council International Europe. The council recognized Los Angeles World Airport's Lawa and its continued commitment to sustainability and gave both airports a Level IV Transformation Accreditation. The Airport Carbon Accreditation Program assesses carbon management practices by airports and recognizes them for their efforts to quantify and reduce carbon emissions from airport operations. A Level IV recognizes an airport for demonstrating emissions reduction progress. According to Lawa, LAX now joins only three other commercial airports in the U.S. with a Level IV accreditation. For more information, go to lawa.org/news-releases. A new career pathways project will see the L.A. Zoo partner with Outward Bound Adventures to restore six acres of coast live oak woodland located on the zoo's property. The five-year Woodland Restoration and Career Pathways Project will recruit fill technicians and youth to be part of the Outward Bound Adventures workforce. The habitat restoration will involve invasive plant removal, native plant propagation, continued scientific data analysis, and will have a public education component. According to L.A. Zoo, this unique project highlights how collective action can impact environmental change, create connections to nature, and enrich our communities. For more info, visit lazo.org/press. The Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, has announced that Fire Service Day, a citywide open firehouse celebration, will take place this year on Saturday, May 10. According to the LAFD, this year's theme, "Stronger Together."